Tell the team to go again that the recorder would march.
Yes.
We're live now.
Especially that honorable part. I don't hear that very often, especially in house.
All right, we're on.
All right, Tim's can't commit to court, come to order. This is Tuesday, 26th day of September 2017, 9:30 a.m., County Court Room, Anawak, Texas. If you'll all rise. Get your table. Okay, just go in and pray.
Dear Lord, thank you for your day, thank you for everything. I pray that you'll help all of our officers that are in duty right now, Lord, and I pray that you'll help everyone after this get home safely, and I pray that you'll help everything go smooth, and pray, amen.
Amen. All right, Isaac, Arne, who's going to lead us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, you see him. All right, we're going to jump right down to 1.4, Discussing Consider Population Recognized in October 1 through 7, 2017, National 4-H Week in Texas. Nathan Boaz is going to read the resolution. Nathan? I couldn't find anybody to tell her.
Shortest one we have.
Whereas the Chambers County Commissioners Court is proud on to the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Oral Life Extension Service for 110 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters through the Lungsore State, and whereas the admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps youth or young Texas to acquire knowledge, development, law skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing matters of society. Whereas it is more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants, ranging in age from eight to 19, hailing from diverse ethnic and so... socioeconomic backgrounds, and truly representing a cross-section of the state. Whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for sure of its more than 22,000 volunteers, who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. Whereas throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has evolved across positive role members for countless Texans, and through its innovations and inspiring programs contributes to the, or continues to build the characters and to instill the values that have made our state strong and brave. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Chambers County Commissioners Court hereby design, or design next October 1st, or October 17th.
First through seven.
First through, okay. First through seven, or 2017, the National 4-H Week in Texas, and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Oral Life Extension Service and many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thanks, sir. Still moved? Looking back at Commissioner Snack, second back at Commissioner Gore, and those in favor? All right. Most carriers, come on out, and we'll present this to you.
Good morning again.
Isaac, you're supposed to be taking that resolution.
Okay, over here, please.
There you go.
There we go, I can't see Commissioner George, there we go, oh, there we go. And the young man, if you could look, there we go.
You talking to me?
Oh, guys, hi, guys, let me get mine. Guys, one more. Smile, I'm going to take a couple. Okay, you guys stay there, I'm going to scoot over here, it's a little more centered. There you go, thank you, Larry. All right, there you go. Thank you.
Got it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate all you do. We'll get one.
Great job.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for making the best better.
See y'all later.
Barbara Sill, thanks for Barbara Sill.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back up to 1.1, citizen's comments, if you plan on making a comment today, you need to fill out a citizen's comment forms down on the podium. You have three minutes to make your comments. All right, Jeremy Ramsey, Central Bay Graff, question, what's being done different, how to ensure repairs get completed as to what happened after? All right. Come on up, sir, how are you this morning?
Good morning.
We met on Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Glad to state your name for the record.
Jeremy Ramsey.
Thank you, Karen.
I live in Legends Bay. I am actually just concerned with rumor mill and everything throughout the city, the community, whatever about the incidents after Hurricane Ike, that was funding, that was given to the state to look at, or to the county, to look at drainage issues, repairs of Hackberry Creek, and different waterways, and different things we have in the county. So, I'm just, I've heard different things of why, what happened, didn't happen, whatever, I'm just more concerned with really what is going to happen this time that's different than the last time, that's actually going to ensure that there's something done with the drainage system there, right there on the south side of I-10, east, or west of 3180, in that area where that neighborhood is built. That's my biggest concern, and that's really what I'm looking for. My red lines, reading the paper, that you guys can't speak on the matter, whatever this is not, but I just want to make sure I got that on the record, and actually curious to know and answer, and if not, get on the agenda, figure out how to get on the agenda to have that discussion.
We will be having those discussions.
I'm sure.
It's not on this agenda, so we can't discuss it, but there will be a time when we will be. Keep watching our agendas. Feel free to come anytime.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
All right, Bobby, come, Kevin, Melissa. Thank you very much, Mike, now. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Bonnie, from Chamin. I was just coming, as I live in that neighborhood and in that area as well, and I have some concerns, and I would like to see something done to help us to fix it, so that we don't have issues in the future, that whole area, you know, with all the drainage situation as it is now, and as they continue to go, I would like to see something done to help us, you know, help our community.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Stacy Fletcher. Thank you very much, Kevin, Mo, Lonnie Fisher, Dan.
Morning, everybody, Stacy Fletcher, with Legends Bay subdivision as well. My concerns are like the other two with Hackberry Creek cleanup, possibly cotton bayou, and in regards to the Lonnie Fisher dam, if he has any adverse effects on the flow of Hackberry Creek once it's cleaned up. I'm interested in finding a solution to maintain Hackberry Creek once it's cleaned up, if that's one of the resolutions y'all have in mind. And my other concern is, is when will this clean up and removal of the slow-flow take place? Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Vicki Dierman. Vicki also ran a flight before in the past to address drainage in Legends Bay, what happened with Grant, what's going to be done there? Vicki.
Good morning, Vicki Dierman. Basically same thing that they said, but one of my other concerns is the retention pond or lack thereof, they've added two new sections, and they've never done a thing to the retention pond, which is always full anyway. And just to let you know that last Sunday, we got about two hours of rain, and the streets flooded again, they didn't come up as high, for sure, but they were impassable due to vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. All right, John Neese, Roden Bridge, up in Fort 1000, maintenance, expansion, acquisition, good morning, sir.
Good morning, my name is John Neese, I wanted to introduce myself and my sister, Leah Neese, we are landowners here in Chambers County, and my family has been here for quite a number of years, and we have some, one of the parcels that we own is subject to this 1409 expansion eminent domain proceeding. I was originally involved in this because my mother came to me, the only lawyer in the family, and said, you got to represent me in this eminent domain case, and so I was involved in it since about 2015, and then she passed away over Christmas, and now my sister and I own a piece of land. And so, on her birthday, the 18th of September, we happened to have this special commissioners' hearing, where the state and us, on our side, presented our appraisals, that's been decided, and I believe that you all will be considering that award and whether or not to appeal it. And I just, again, wanted to introduce myself, I wanted to tell you all that my sister and I did not get the number that we wanted, the county didn't get the number it wanted, but we are in support of settling and resolving this matter now, and so we want to urge you to consider the award and consider not appealing it. And even though we, my mother and I were sold a piece of land, and we certainly didn't plan on selling any land, we understand that's for the better good, and we'd like to put this to the matter to rest, and so I want to thank you all for hearing me out, and look forward to hearing from you all at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. All right, I think that's all, citizen's comments. Okay, let's go to the second page. Under 9.1, Safety Emergency Management, 9.1, discuss and consider funding on ambulance and Winnie Stoll EMS. Morning, Kim.
Gordon.
I know there's folks here on the edge.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, name's Kim Turner, Emergency Management Coordinator. Judge, there are several people here regarding this agenda item, I'd ask that we take this into executive session and talk about it, so, before you take action.
Okay, sir, anything you want to talk about before we do? Where's Mr. Mo and those guys sitting there?
Who do you want to report, Judge?
Carl and...
Winnie Stoll EMS.
David, Winnie Stoll EMS. I know they're on the hallway.
Hi, Judge.
Morning.
None of my board members are here, and you're not returning my text messages, and I was advised that I'm not supposed to talk about this matter.
What's your name, sir?
I'm Ron Nichols, Winnie Stoll EMS.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so, and I know there's been some questions about the, and I know you're not supposed to talk about it, I don't know if David, Ken, or somebody, about half the funding being done by the county, half the funding done by the Winnie Stoll EMS?
Yes, sir.
Not the EMS, I'm sorry, Winnie Stoll Hospital District. So, is that what's...
Yeah, I'd rather give with them and talk about a little background, Judge, before we put this to vote with the Commissioners.
Okay, I mean, I know I heard things like, and I'm a court roomer, but they want to take the money from the hospital district.
Right, and then, let's talk about this.
Okay, David, anything you want to say before we take it back? Not David, I'm sorry. I don't mean to insult you like that. Ed, is there anything you want to say? Come on up to microphone.
I'm Ed Merle, with the, I'm the president of the Winnie Stoll Hospital District. If they want to talk about it privately, that's fine, I want to get everybody on the same page, and we're ready to participate.
Okay, and what, consultation with attorney, so we actually can't go back until attorney gets here, so.
Okay.
But, yeah. So, ain't nothing else you want to say, don't record before we do it?
Yeah, then we're ready to participate.
Okay.
Okay, are you good with holding over and let's talk about this, Ed, before we proceed?
I guess.
We'll get to it soon. We can.
Okay.
Is that one of those new Apple watches?
Too miserable.
Okay, let's take that in the executive session with consultation with attorney, section 55107, one of the government codes, once Mr. Brandon Mark gets here. Communication Technologies, we have...
Judge, Nathan just walked up.
Okay, thank you. We got a couple of public hearing items, I want to... 10.1, Discussing Consider Invoic from NetApp, Corporation of Hallway Maintenance and Disaster Recovery Services for October 1, 2017, September 30 of 2018.
Okay, I know that none of us want to pay this, that way it would be, but considering the recent pass of the hurricanes and flooding of the courthouse, if I ever stand with a repair from the roof, I just feel like it's something that we need to consider going ahead and paying it, so hardware and disaster recovery, if anything happens, they do have a mainframe that's ready to go, and they would bring it to us and give us backup running. We're still using products from the mainframe, and it expires so soon, you know, it expires in October, and we're just not ready for everything to be off the mainframe yet, and I guess I'm really just giving up to you, the risk is high of being lost or forever, however, I mean, that's $10,000.
Have they not willing to prorate this?
So, I'm asking a question, how many more months are we going to need? Six months?
I would say probably six months.
Did we pay monthly?
We've never done that before.
I know.
I could ask.
We could probably pay monthly, and then come back if it's not.
I mean, I would like that, I don't really...
No, we got, I mean, it's something we got to...
I don't know, I guess I want to talk to everyone with them, but...
They've been rewarding your salary annually, at least, if we can, if we think we have six months.
Well, they're not, they're not happy with us, so I don't know if they're working. I know, it doesn't hurt to ask.
And we can, I guess because of the due date, I guess we probably have time to put it back on the agenda next time.
When's the date?
Or in here, if you want to say, I don't know, it's due October, yeah, and...
Well, I wouldn't, again, I wouldn't have any problem doing it if they'll prorate on a monthly basis. I mean, we expect the final...
We're starting that hotel, I guess the deadline is set for October 16th, I think, and that would take ID records and vital statistic records and things like that off of the mainframe, but we already have other products, all the other products.
So, if that happens on October 16th, then...
I believe so, but we haven't tested this product, I mean, we are going to have to have some, you know, it takes a long time to verify data and make sure that nothing's missing, and especially those that are... Maybe we can ask if we could pay for six months at a time, because I'm sure it's going to take a few months, you know, to be really certain that we feel comfortable.
I think we have, it doesn't hurt to ask, if we want to ask for six months, quarter, quarterly.
Do you want to give approval for something like that, or do you just want to bring it back to you?
I said directly to bring it back. Some of what we'd like to have is make quarterly payments, and once we, or make six months, make a yearly, a year, we work out, and I'll have to work this one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone, table 10.1. Airport 12-1, Discussing Consider After 2018, Rupie, Airport Maintenance Program, grant, program ramp grants for Anawak City airports. This is the grant we discussed a year, 50/50 toll share, program was texted out, we found up 50,000 total per airport, per texted, for the eligible, and we had budgets good to...
Authorized the 2018 grant grants for Anawak City airports, is that?
Michael, Commissioner Snack, second back, Commissioner George, questions?
Mine good with it?
Yes, sir.
It's the same program that you...
Are you Bobby Hallman?
A lot younger than Bobby Hallman.
I believe the airport comes back and requests each of the projects that they're going to do under this individual, so the county still pays half, you guys get the opportunity.
I, yeah, most of second for the fact, oh, most carriers, 16-1, under Law enforcement 16-1, discussing the purchase of three vehicles from Sealed B Ford from Sheriff's Office, good morning, Chief. Morning, Judge. Okay, so you got 2017 Triple A Tahoe, $34,010, $10.00, two of those, and then a 1740, a 250 Cruze, 45, 514, 95, anything from the first hand?
No, Judge, don't look at prices, and then one of our co-ops and the sheriff's office did the goppy pricing.
1135, 35, 31, for those three vehicles. Are these replacements, what are we dealing with, the old ones?
They're in inventory to be traded off.
I'm looking for approval of an amount that tips $150,503 of service.
Those are mine, Commissioner Snack, second back, Commissioner George, any other questions?
What's a 254?
That's for West cattle, hauling all those cattle that escaped.
They wore one out, Mr. Lee.
I think we're due for a new set of tires on that new truck, he ran it pretty hard.
Those in favor? Oh, most carriers. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Before we get rid of the vehicles, we make sure we don't do anywhere else?
We will. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Will you give us the mileage and age on those vehicles we're going to trade in?
Yeah, we've got to folder all the plates together.
Commissioner Nelson had a thought, maybe we can do it somewhere else before we actually...
Just make sure we don't have...
Sir, plus, and trade them all? Yeah, that's, that's it, boys.
I'll, I'll have a list for you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go into job description, 17, under question on 17-1, Discussing Consider Job Description. Thank you. Did I get you all the words?
Yes, but I'm ready, I'm ready. We have presented three job descriptions, actually four. One has been updated, three has been created for the reasons stated in your package, and if you need a little more information in reference to the Assistant Project Manager or the new position of Maintenance and Facilities Coordinator, I will allow Mike Leslie to address those questions.
But the PC's writing in approval?
Yes.
Judge, I didn't understand the clerk tax assessor collector, it's a new part-time position, but it's an old job description, I didn't quite follow what it was.
Well, actually, it was created, they don't actually have just a clerk position in their office, all of their deputies are deputy clerks due to them having to be deputized, so this position is just for a basic clerk. Currently will be part-time, eventually, it may, it could be full-time, but based on the duties, it was just simple duties that they can assist with, each staff member, the position will be bonded, but not deputized.
Okay, all right. So, it's the, ah, I got...
So, should we ask to do the same thing a deputy clerk can do, or less?
No, no, this is just to assist with office work, you know, mailouts, different data entry.
But is this the same job description that we had for clerks before everybody was a deputy clerk?
No, we pretty much structured this one more from like a relief clerk position, because they come in and just assist with these duties.
So, it's branded?
Yes, this is a brand-new position for the tax office, it's, eventually she's going to hire a part-time clerk, and I'm sure she'll present that when the time comes, she'll hire the clerk, and eventually the funds will be reimbursed from the state for a Chapter 19 bill registration program, and so she wanted to make sure she had a job description in place to outline what those jobs need to be.
Thanks.
I'd like Mike to discuss his new employee deal.
Mike, please? Go ahead, Mike.
Help to benefit of mine, so I know we've got a lot on the plate.
Which one, the project manager side or the Maintenance of Facilities Corps? Maintenance of Facilities is going to be somebody that helps me with the getting all the pricing, the maintenance side of it, he's going to help me with the contracts, he's going to help me with getting the, I've got the generator contracts, I've got the contract contracts, there's a, there's a whole bunch of things that need to be all brought together, and we need to start paying attention a lot more about doing them on a yearly basis, making sure that we're getting the right pricing, and we're just not getting to some of this stuff. Getting to, you know, you wanted the, you wanted the Legion Hall payment, getting three contractors to give me a price, just somebody there to help me pull all of it together, and, and the way I'm seeing the whole structure of this after the first of the year, is you're going to kind of combine the construction and the maintenance departments together, so I'm trying to have somebody that can kind of work with both sides and be kind of a general all-around person.
So, they're going to help oversee all, we had 19 buildings hit water, is that a big part of that?
Yes.
22?
22 buildings that have water?
Yes, sir, that one, we've already taken care of some, but yes, we did initially.
Mike, if you had these two positions filled with that free look and some time to assist, I'd be on his project.
Absolutely. My problem is, is that I'm going from fire to fire to fire, and I'm not even, I'm not even getting out to see some of these buildings, to walk through some of these buildings to see, I mean, you know, I went to Winnie yesterday, we got problems, we got problems that I don't think are being addressed, and I just have to have some people that are, I think the maintenance department's doing a very good job, they're just, they're more the worker bees than the people that I need to kind of put all this together and make sure that I can get it out there and get it, get it handled.
So, did we budget after this year, or for next year?
This year.
I thought so.
Yes.
So, it's already been budgeted, we've already approved the position, it's just a matter of approving this job description. And where's it budgeted, in maintenance?
One of them's budgeted out of maintenance, and one of them's budgeted out of Roden Bridge. My understanding is the Roden Bridge will be brought over, or whatever y'all decide to do, after first of the year, next year.
Yeah, 2018 budget. And you're not, I don't think so, which one's in which, but we're not proving the hire, we're proving the job description right now.
Yes, I'm planning on wanting to put this out, you know, start... Yes, I'm, I'm planning on wanting to put this out, you know, start, uh, getting applications.
Okay, entertaining motion to approve job description.
It sounds like you have an immediate need, but the position's budgeted for 2018 and not this year?
No, this year.
It, it is, that's what I thought you.
All right, we may have to take some clarification from road and bridge as part of this.
Well, one, one is in building maintenance and one is in road and bridge, right?
Correct.
And, and Bobby and I talked about the way of road and bridge, an assistant project manager will come out of the road and bridge.
All right, but all we're proving right now is the job description. No, not whether being paid from, not the hired. First back to Commissioner George, second back to Commissioner Nelson.
It was actually four.
Four, yeah. So you made a motion for? And secondary? Favor? All right. Opposed, most carries, let's go back to first page. Patty, I'll get you out here. Uh, one point six, discuss, consider, 2018 sheriff, constable fees. Good morning. Who's taking that, we're asking that?
Pat Clark. I just wondered if y'all have any questions. All I, all I changed was probate postings.
So the probate postings changed to twenty-five and fifty for 2018, everything else?
Well, they've already had it fifty, but I didn't know they had it fifty, I thought it was twenty-five. So they have it fifty, I was going to keep it at fifty, but it wasn't on our schedule plan.
Okay, so you just correct in the schedule?
Yes, sir.
Look for adoption of the schedule.
Most of them by Commissioner Snack, second by Commissioner Gore. Any questions, y'all going to pay out that evening?
Gentlemen, favor?
All right. Opposed, most carries, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, uh, one thirteen, public hearing, ten a.m., on the creation of Denbury Onshore LLC 2017, reinvestment zone, gets now, ten oh four, eight m. Uh, we'll recess out of regular session of Commissioners' Court and go into executive session. Going to public hearing this time. Been a long month. So is there any public comments on the creation of Denbury Onshore LLC 2017 reinvestment zone? Here none, at ten oh five a.m. will turn out of the public hearing, go back into regular session of Commissioners' Court, discuss, consider order establishing the Denbury Onshore LLC 2017 reinvestment zone. Mike Shields is here. Morning, Mike.
Morning, Chief.
You going to come out and talk? You going to sit back there and look for it? He tells her to dance when he's here.
Mike Shields, Economic Development Foundation, the, uh, Denbury LLC reinvestment zone was, the application for tax abatement was approved a few, uh, commission, uh, court sessions ago. This annual call for the hearing today, which probably notice was put out, this should be, uh, so this is the next step. Then in the future, probably two weeks, or the next Commissioner's Court, they'll come for you with a contract or approval of the tax abatement.
So I need a motion to establish Denbury Onshore LLC 2017 reinvestment zone.
So move.
Second. Most of my Commissioner Snack, second back to Commissioner Nelson. Any questions, Mike? Favor? All right. Opposed, most carries, thank you, Mike. All right, uh, two point seven, public hearing, ten a.m., discuss, excuse me, two point six, discuss, consider adopting the 2017 tax rate. Aaron, you in there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you up there? Let's go and do the public. Uh, two point seven, public hearing, ten a.m., discuss 2018 Chambers County budget. It's now ten oh seven a.m., we will recess out of Commissioners' Court again and go into public hearing on the budget. Any comments on the 2018 budget? Here none, will turn out of public hearing at ten oh seven and a half, at ten oh eight, and go and, go back into the regular session of Commissioners' Court and go to two point six, discuss, consider adopting the 2018, 2017 tax rate. Aaron?
Um, you know, we've had a few public hearings on this, um, last, or current tax rate is point five five two six eight nine. Our proposed tax rate for next year will be point five four two five four eight, which is about one cent less than last year's. Can you, is there any, really any questions?
So it's a little over a penny, right?
Yes, sir.
Look for adoption of the tax rate.
Most of my Commissioner Snack, second back to Commissioner George. Any questions on the tax rate? Those in favor? Opposed, most carries, two point eight, discuss, consider adopting the 2018 Chambers County budget. Aaron, go ahead.
Um, so we wrote a little letter about the budget and kind of what we did, um, I kind of hit the highlights of it. We had an increase of about nine percent of certified price values. We also had an increase in Chapter three, three eighty-one agreements. So with that, we were, the court was able to lower the tax rate, um, by a penny. Currently, seven one percent of our taxes are paid by industry and business, twenty-nine percent residence, which is kind of interesting, because a couple of years ago, it was about seventy-five, twenty-five, so that's, that's been changing. We didn't have too many big issues this year. The biggest, I, I would say, was Hurricane Harvey. But luckily, you know, we handled it, I think, pretty well on our budgets, you know, we made our, our deadlines, our public hearings, and everyone was pretty tired, um, which was great. This year, we had about two point six million dollars budgeted for capital projects and assets, for road bridges, heat control, uh, new trucks, new vehicles, new projects, uh, softwares. We also made a point this year to budget over eight hundred thousand dollars to put back into our reserves. Last year, which hit, so the court was proactive and start replenishing that for the coming years. We have eight new employees, maintenance, district clerk, county attorney, library, county auditor, county auditor's office. The court had budgeted four percent across the board for all county employees, and also a hundred and twenty thousand for merits, same as last year. Currently, we're still working on the CCOA agreement. We've got numbers set up, you know, uh, we've, you know, numbers, so that's all budgeted for next year. We just got to deal with some language issues, but really, that's, that's all, that's it. Court did a really good job this year, so.
Oh, thank you.
We got.
And, and Ryan Nixon, the CCOA, and it's, we're going to table that today, it's not. The, the money part has worked out, but there's still a couple of minor issues that we need to start with.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, that's, that's about it, unless you have any questions for me?
Uh, just, I'd like to get, I, I know y'all usually put together a, just sort of a three-page, four-page highlight, would be great.
I'll send it to her. Yeah, I'll send everyone the budget and the letter I just read, um, just to everybody. Email it, it'll be on the county website this afternoon, for sure.
Great.
You have a question?
Can we tell how many people go to the website and, and look at our financial information?
Y'all, there's a way, because I know that I'm the, I'm not bragging or anything, but I know that my site, I mean, my link is the number one hit, for obvious reasons. So I'm sure there's a way you can track.
Well, and.
Sarah, I think even.
All right, take out that.
You verified, Aaron, about that question I had about the, uh, the agreement on that clause in there about the, uh, separation between the county employees and the sheriff's department, or the, or the unit?
Yes.
You verified it wasn't in there, or?
Right.
Wasn't part of the deal, or was it in there?
For this year, it's.
So the next two-year deal?
It's not, it's just a straight dollar amount.
So we amended the contract to be, to separate the two, so. Well, we're still working on that agreement, though, right?
Yeah, no, we're not, it, it's actually on the agenda in one point nine, but it's going to be tabled so we can, um, like I said, a couple of minor things need to work out. You talked to Mr. Phil about it.
I, you know, I mean, I just remembered when last agreement was in there, but I'm not sure we're still, we're still on the same page, because nobody said anything about it.
All right, entertaining motion to approve 2018 Chambers County. Most of my Commissioner George, second back to Commissioner George. Those in favor? All right. Opposed, most carries, thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Auditor's Office, and everybody who does, we appreciate all of our work, and Aaron also, about that. Okay. Now, we're going to, is there anybody that's got anything else on the agenda that we need to get to before we go to executive session?
Judge, do you mind knocking me out? I mean, not.
Knocking you out?
Not.
Rusty, take care of it, we, Sarah will take care of it. All right, one point seven, discuss, consider overtime paid for county clerk. Why is related to November seventh, 2017 constitutional amendment election, October twentieth through November seventh, 2017. Miss Hoppel?
Um, our county policy is, um, that overtime will be paid after Nikki helped me forty hours and. Actual time. And it's, it's rare, but it seems like it happens every now and then between Memorial Day or Veterans Day, that have a lot of employees and, and including members of the county, all kinds of things, that, um, work a lot of overtime hours to make the election a success, and yet they're not compensated for it due to that holiday. I have the money budgeted between Nikki's office and myself, we figured that, uh, the estimated amount would be about thirty-five hundred dollars. And I'm just asking that these employees, um, because elections are, um, it's not an everyday situation, and that elections, we don't know if it'll be eight o'clock when we finish, or ten o'clock when we finish, and of course, for midnight, and then I expect them to be right back at the office at eight o'clock the next morning.
So this is a variance to our?
Variance to the policy.
Personnel policy?
Absolutely.
And it's a, it's a request, just a one-time?
It's a one-time request, but like I said, it just, when these things happen around a federal holiday is when my employees aren't compensated for what they, the extra hours that they have to perform.
Well, it's basically double time and a half without that.
Well, they won't be working on the holiday.
So, right, but the, the holiday causes for those extra hours that they would work that week, the holiday causes the first eighth of those hours to be paid at straight time versus overtime. So the various would, uh, approve for every hour they worked during that week to be paid at overtime.
Every hour they worked that week over thirty-two?
Over four.
Over four.
Over four. So we start the paid period, Rusty, so we start early voting, you know, and so we're coming in at six thirty a.m. and leaving at seven fifteen p.m. And then, of course, Election Day, uh, we start our day about five forty-five and end at whenever Central County is finished. And so all those hours, I want, um, I want my employees compensated for it, normally they would be in an election if it, if the national holiday didn't fall on that week.
We're not violating the Election Code, I mean, as far as you know.
No, if the Election Code, we would tie back these.
I didn't say election.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, I said.
That's what I mean, but I don't know what to mean.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, sir, because the policy, the minimum is they will receive eight hours holiday, and then the additional hours will be overtime. So anytime you increase what you're paying them for their work, it's just an added benefit. We definitely set by the minimum requirement as per our policy.
Well, Rusty's statement was right, it's a thirty-two.
It's thirty-two, right, basically, we would look at every hour they worked overtime.
Because the eight hour was a holiday.
Right.
So it's just for that week?
Just for that one week that the holiday falls into, that is correct.
And, and that'll be my motion, that we, we, uh, we pay the election workers, uh, at an overtime rate for everything worked over thirty-two hours.
Of the week.
Of the holiday week.
Most of my Commissioners Snack, second back to Commissioner Nelson. Yes, sir.
I would rephrase that, Commissioner, because that's the issue, is you calculate overtime on how it was worked. I would say the motion would be, you pay them time and a half for every hour paid over forty hours versus worked.
We, yeah.
Okay, all right. And I didn't want to open a can of worms, but the, the issue with it is, employees are paid time and a half for hours worked over forty hours a week. So when there's a holiday or a vacation day, that's not considered a work day. Therefore, they would deduct that eight-hour holiday, they technically only have thirty-two hours. So if they worked four hours overtime, that it would still normally be paid at straight time, because it, it wasn't, the holiday's not hours worked. So that's the whole verbiage in Department Labor Law, is you pay for overtime for hours worked. And so what you're suggesting is that they're going to be paid time and a half for all hours that they're actually paid over forty hours that week, not work, because they're not going to work on the holiday, that would just put you right back into the.
So the verbiage in that motion is?
Just the technical verbiage.
Yeah, so tell me, tell me what it should be. I think we're all on board to do the same thing, just.
That the county clerk employees will be time and a half, paid time and a half for all hours paid over forty hours that week.
Is that your amended motion?
Yeah.
And you amend the second?
I guess so.
If the auditor says that's the way to do it, that's fine.
All right.
Well, I mean, I want. We're running the same issue with road and bridge, I mean, there's a lot of days going ten-hour day.
It's not my fault, I'm just a messenger.
We, you know, we get the eight hours on Monday, and that was the day they pulled the work, so.
Well, if you say you're paying them for all hours worked, like the original motion was, they're not going to work on the holiday, so they're right back to only working potentially forty hours, so therefore you'd be violating.
But he said thirty.
All right, we've got amended motion, amended second, those in favor? Opposed, most carries, thank you. Uh, one, one point eight, discuss and consider memorandum of understanding between e-recording partners, Networks LLC and Chambers County that provides electronic recording for county clerk.
Thank you. Um, e-recording, uh, partners is, we have several e-recording contracts in place already. This is just another vendor that would like to, uh, take, take advantage of the service. Um, Scott Field has approved the contract. Um, because we're supposed to go live with our new software system on October the sixteenth, we're not going to put this in place until after we're with our new system, so we don't convolute the net data system for just approximately fifteen years space. So, um, I just ask for your approval.
And I did talk to Mr. Phil, he's good with MOE. Most of back to Commissioner George, second back to Commissioner Gore. Any questions? Those in favor? All right. Opposed, most carries, one eleven, discuss, consider agreement, 2010s County City Beach City relating to the November seventh, 2017 election.
Um, you have in front of you the, uh, Beach City, uh, election agreement that, uh, Mayor Combs and I reviewed again this morning, they have their meeting this evening, and we made, uh, just one, one change on it, that we both read it the same way five different times, and we both don't even know how we sounded correct, but we're going to agree to change it. Um, and it's whereas, only the recital, whereas the boundary lines of the city are within the boundary lines of voting precinct five of the county, which is the change from what you see on your, the boundary lines of precinct five of the city are within the boundary lines of the county. So we just made that, uh, simple change, and, um, So we just made that, uh, simple change, and, um, and this is just absolutely the same exact contract that we use, and Mr. Field has approved it. The election equipment addendum that you see on, uh, page 53 is incorrect, only because that was based on the old system, the MS system, I provided Mr. Combs with the new pricing, which then comes through the day. That was just a mistake on my part, so...
Move for approval as amended with the new attachment, is it A?
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
Motion by Commissioner Snack, second back to Mr. George. Questions? Pos, motion carries, 112, discuss and consider agreement, 20 Chambers County City Baccenton relating to the November 7, 2017 election.
And I ask that you table that till next court.
Morning, you up, Brian, it's here.
Do you have to call him?
No, that's okay, if he was here, he'll get to that. Does everybody else got anything, ma'am?
And then, just one other issue, and it's under the payroll changes.
For yours? All right, let's go, payroll changes. Sheriff, you doing that one?
Don't wake me?
No, let's go, let's do that before we go.
Parks Recreation, 5.1, discuss and consider no-wake sign from south of I-10 on Turtle
Bayou and extending north of I-10, passing through the residential area. Sheriff.
So in our last discussion, what we wanted you to do was lift the no-wake after the Turtle Bio Bridge on 563, because that...
Turtle Bio, I-10 Bridge.
I, Turtle Bio 563 Bridge. It goes from I-10 all the way to Mouth. No-wake. The, the mouth has become so silted up that you've gotta get on the plane to get through it, or be in an airway. So we'd like you to lift it from 563 to the mouth, and then extend it north of I-10, and honestly, I can't tell you how far. Scott told me to tell you that he couldn't find his folder, and of course, my folder's in a Conex box. So I think he wants you to table it.
Well, he told me, and he had to go home.
You could do it.
And if you don't know, Mr. Field got water in his house.
Right.
And we got 44 kids, that makes... I haven't had that many. And, yeah, he simply could approve it, and let him figure it out later, or table it, probably gonna be easy to table it. You'll cover that?
Yeah, because we really need to get of how far north of I-10 we need to...
Okay.
The no-wake sign.
All right, thank you. Payroll changes, legislature payroll changes, 7010, DC Velasquez, Billy Mightness to Musquega Control, Janitor Sealsman's operator signing red flag.
Actually, Judge, I mean, she'll continue to be janitor.
Right, I don't mean to, yes, I mean, in addition to her, how about that? All right, Jimmy Mount, Sheriff's Office, Sergeant 3, Senior Deputy.
What's the difference? Chief? Sergeant 3 to Senior Deputy?
Yeah, what's the difference?
It looks like he and Wesley are swapping positions.
We're talking about Jimmy Mount going from senior...
Yes, sir.
Going to senior 3?
Yes, sir. What it, what it is, is he was a Sergeant 3, that's for the K-9. We've retired his dog, so he's going back to the deputy level, because he's no longer a K-9.
Got it, thank you.
So Wesley's moved into Sergeant 3.
All right, Don Wesley King, going from Deputy Senior to Sergeant 3. Kenneth Floyd, changing the position from Operator 2, Truck Driver, to Operator 3. All Truck Driver, right there. And Quicken Operator 2, 14-6, to Quicken Operator 3, 16-7. And it's noted in there also, Bobby allocated that up, and that's all I have.
You missed one.
Oh, I apologize. Gellander from the Cottor Orange, Western Addison Enfield, receiving pay increase to their increased responsibility, Tyler, conversion. Patty going from $9 an hour to $11 an hour as a Parkhead Clerk. Sorry. And then Eric Carcerano, District Attorney's Office, Controller, Judiciary, portionment $3,055.54, for Dane Listy, Eric, and Kathleen Estes-Cavell.
One more.
Keep going.
246.
This is a little screen you've got.
Sinetria Elmore.
This is the same red page, just approval, it's what the, officially approved by the Human Probation Department, as the Human Probation Board. Linda Blue, Human Probation, Assistant Human Probation Officer slash Secretary to Human Prob, Assistant Human Probation Officer, Office Manager. And she paid 338474 to 5214637. Louis Rodriguez, Human Probation.
Did you miss one?
No, I got the same. Hey, look what you made me do.
I didn't hear you say that. Where's the last one?
It's, I know it's Louis Rodriguez, but you're... I don't know, when you hit my mouse, I, everything went out.
Yeah, Louis Rodriguez, Human Probation, Secretary to, uh...
You want me to fix it?
Keep going down. Keep going down there. Going from what, 44-9, 48-10, to 46-7, 46-01?
Yes, sir.
On Sinetria, what, I don't understand the from and to.
She just got hired, she's not getting an increase in pay, but it had to go on record for the grant, that's the right of pay.
Okay.
All right, any questions, entertaining motion? Motion by Commissioner George, second back to Mr. Gore. Okay, no questions, those in favor? Pos, motion carries, anybody else got anything we need to get to? All right, we're going to... Take 9.1, discuss and consider funding and ambulance, Winnie Stoll, EMS to executive session consultation with attorney, I-5107, under Government Code. And then, Roden Bridge, 3-1, discuss and consider update rights of way acquisition for FM 1409, F-32, discuss and consider property and rights of way acquisition for Gilborn Terrain Project, uh, purchase of property, 55107. Brandon Martin, we will recess at 10:31 a.m.
Hey, Lauren. They're talking, I think that. I ended it, I turned it, and it went off.